Do I need to push this? You can hear me without me pushing it. I pulled the legs of the chair here. It being seven o'clock, I'd like to open the planning board meeting for Thursday, February 8th, 2024, for the town of Wenham. We're meeting in Town Hall. There's also a link available on Zoom, and it looks like we are being broadcast on HW Cam. This is a lot of reverb. Should other people turn off their mics when I'm speaking? No? Yeah, I'm good. Okay. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is a public hearing on a zoning bylaw amendment that we started considering at our last meeting. Do you want to read this into the record, or shall I?
Either one, Anne, if you would like to. Here I go.
It's a hearing pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, on a warrant article to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Wenham, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Wenham zoning bylaws to add a new section entitled Inclusionary Zoning, which will require a certain percentage of housing units in any new development be deemed as affordable. We had a conversation.
Ms. Manneson.
Hello.
Hello.
Ian, the public hearing notice was in the newspaper on Thursday, January 25th, and Thursday, February 1st.
Oh, right. It's on the screen, and probably, I don't know, folks at home see the screen or not, but there's a public, the legal notice was posted on January 25th and February 1st. We had a conversation after the last meeting with town council, who suggested that we not put this forward for the warrant. Do you have, do you want to tell us about that?
Sure. We've had a couple of iterations on this, and town council's advice is possibly to push this off until hopefully the fall town meeting. It's not quite ready yet for to be finalized. And there's some question about current case law that recently occurred that may impact how inclusionary zoning can be used in municipalities.
Stonem.
The Stonem case, yeah. Although I think that wasn't her primary concern, her primary concern had to do with...
No, it wasn't her primary concern. She had some other concerns about some of the details of the bylaw that we've drafted.
The other conversation, the other part of the conversation was a thought that maybe the Affordable Housing Trust folks could come in and talk to us about the concerns that she was expressing to us, so that we can work through what we can do with.
Yeah, and it doesn't seem like we'd have time to complete that before town meeting.
Or before the warrant has to be.
Yeah. Well, the warrant actually closed last night.
Right.
So we'd have to petition them to reopen it, to get this on.
So that being the case, I'm going to open the public hearing, because it's been posted, and if anyone's here to speak about it, we'd love to hear general ideas or concerns or anything. I don't want to turn anyone away from giving that testimony if they want to, but we don't have the final text of the ordinance to look at. So if no one's here to speak to that, I'm going to take a motion then to close the public hearing, and then at the time when we do have a text to talk through, we would repost a public hearing and do this again. So could I take a motion to...
I move that we close the open hearing.
Public hearing, can I have a second?
A second.
It's now they're going into executive session right away?
Sorry, did someone... Someone needs to mute if they're online. I appreciate the number of people attending online. I think it's terrific, but I would ask you please to mute yourself if you're not speaking.
I was going to say, if somebody does want to speak, you can raise your hand, and you can be recognized by the chair.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Woodland, yes. Anderson, aye.
Weeks, aye.
Pascual, aye. Clay, aye.
Okay, that's fine, nothing. So the second item is administrative. It's a request from the Spring Hill Farm Road subdivision for street acceptance. They would like to go to town meeting, and the last we heard about this, there were still things to do. DEP was going to go out there and take a look and see if they had done what they were meant to do, and then there was a question about tree planting. And so, I don't know, Margaret, do you have a report? And I don't know if there's anyone here from Spring Hill.
Yep, I can fill you in. The select board did vote to refer this back to the planning board for your recommendation. So the next step is for us to do our review of the project. And I have contacted the peer review engineers and the DPW director, who'll be going out inspecting the roadway and making sure all of the drainage is done correctly. I will have a final report for you for that February 29th meeting that you're going to be having. So at that time, you'll be able to make your recommendation to the select board as to whether or not you feel this road is ready for acceptance.
And will that be enough time to get it on the warrant?
Yes, yep. I spoke to the town administrator today.
You opened the warrant, yeah.
Yeah, they can probably reopen the warrant for us to put it on. Actually, they may have put it on the warrant already. I'm not sure if they voted last night to add it to the warrant, if it's one of the articles. So it could be on the warrant, but if it's not ready for acceptance, it can be passed over at town meeting.
Will your report include status on easements?
It will. Yes, town council is looking at that.
Easements, planting.
Mm-hmm, yep.
There was a question about affordable units as well, I think.
Yes, there is a question about that from the planning board's decision. This board will have to determine whether they feel that's been fulfilled or not.
Thank you.
And we'll have all of the information on that for you for the next meeting.
So we're going to get peer reviewers.
You need to speak into the mic because we're on.
I just want to make sure we're going to get peer reviewers who are going to conduct the survey. We're going to get legal guidance, and we're going to get the word from Affordable Housing in time for our packets a week before the hearing. I mean, that's in 14 days.
This is, you're still back on the inclusionary zoning one?
I'm on Spring Hill.
Oh, you're on Spring Hill.
Yeah, I mean, that just seems extraordinarily ambitious.
The peer review engineers are out there. I think they may have been out today. I spoke to them yesterday, had a meeting with them. I feel like they should have a good idea of where it stands by then.
I mean, my concern is that if we go into the February 29th meeting and there's any open items, like, oh, we'll take care of this, or this will happen before, or this subject to this condition, I'm not going to feel good about that.
Okay.
Correct.
I think it's got to be, all parties have signed off on it, and everything, all i's dotted, t's crossed. With all due respect, the fact that this came in in January, when this was a topic of discussion last year, doesn't mean that we should rush this at the end. I mean, this is a big deal. It's a big development, and I think we just need to make sure that everything is sewed up perfectly.
Yeah.
If the developer's motivated to get the street accepted, then the burden is on the developer to make sure that everything is taken care of on this one, well before the meeting, not on the 28th, but on the 29th. I mean, a week before the 29th.
Okay. If that can't happen, we probably should put this one off to the fall, too.
That'll be up to you to make that recommendation to the select board.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, we've just had so many people in with issues about this subdivision that I think all of us are a little sensitive to it. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is also administrative, and it is an informal meeting by Gordon College and Polty Homes on a development they would like to put forward on Grapevine Road. This is not a public hearing. However, if people have public statements they want to make, or information or thoughts they want to provide to the board, we are totally open to hearing that, and we will stay, we are finished hearing that. So just so people know, we are quite open to that. I think the way this would go is the developer is here with a presentation, and then I would like to ask the board to ask questions of the developer, and then we will take any comment from the public who want to provide it. Just, I think the purpose is to get reactions, right?
Absolutely. Feedback, suggestions, reactions, that's all welcome tonight.
And I want to make clear that you have not made a formal application yet. Is that correct?
We have not. No, we're at the very, very early stages of a, hopefully, a long productive process between us and the town.
Okay, thank you. Margaret, do you have anything you'd like to add before we ask? Essex, is your first name Essex?
My...
This is Mark.
Mark.
My name is Mark. I'm going to just do an introduction for a couple of minutes, and then I'll turn the microphone over to Essex, who has the presentation, and we'll go through the details of the proposal.
Okay, if you would, please just state your full name from the record, and who you are, and what, you know, who you're representing, and all of that good stuff.
I'll try to do that.
For our minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So for the record, my name is Mark Mastriani, and I'm here with Essex Petrie. And so we're representatives of Polty Homes of New England, and we're excited to be here tonight. I just wanted to thank the board for putting us on the agenda and giving us your time. I want to thank any interested members of the public for taking time out of your day and being here with us tonight, and as well as anybody at home on the Zoom. As the chairperson mentioned, we'd love to present our proposal to the town, to the board. This is a start of a very long process. We're aware of that, and we hope to get very valuable constructive feedback tonight that we can use moving forward to shape our project as we move forward. So Essex and I are representatives of Polty Homes of New England. Can I get to the second slide?
Yes.
So Polty Homes of New England is a local division of the Polty Group. Polty Group is a very large nationally, national home builder, publicly traded, based, the home office is based out of Atlanta, Georgia. We operate independently from Polty Group. I just mentioned that, I like to mention that at the beginning. Basically, Polty Group provides our local division with internal financing. It allows us to construct, develop, sell our projects successfully in this area without the need for third-party lenders or, you know, outside financing. So what I'd really like to do is kind of introduce Polty Homes of New England to you all. Polty Homes of New England has been building here in eastern Massachusetts since 1994. Our local office, where we do our business out of, is about an hour and 15 minutes, depending on traffic, down 495, right in Westboro. We've been located in Westboro since 1994. Since that time, in this area, eastern Mass, Massachusetts, you know, we've developed, built, sold over 8,000 homes in this area. So we consider ourselves a very experienced local builder in this market. Next slide, please. So this is just a list of our current communities that we're building today in the Boston area. So we have 12 active projects, a variety of single-family homes, town homes, and also what we specialize in, which is kind of a mid-rise building, which we like to call garden, garden-style buildings. Just wanted to point out a few of these examples that are closest to here. Riverside Woods, number two on the list, is a 200-home, age-restricted condominium community in Andover on River Road. That was a site that we partnered with Melmark School of New England and worked with the town on a rezoning, and successfully, we actually just completed the project this year, right down the road in Andover. Another community close by, what we call Martin's Landing, that's a community that we bought from the town a few years ago, is a former state hospital on Route 62. We bought the site from the town, worked with the town on a rezoning, and we're currently halfway through the project there of a 502-unit condominium. And then number 10, what we call Highland at Vale, that's in Woburn, starting to go a little further down 93. And that's a large mixed-use community where we partnered with the city of Woburn, and we removed, it's a former craft gelatin facility, so we were able to clean up the site, remove many underutilized buildings, and turn it into a productive condominium community right down the street in Woburn. And we have others as well, but I just wanted to kind of mention the ones closest to here. And I think the importance of this list, our experience, is that Massachusetts and these communities, it's a very small, this is a very small area. There's a lot of town officials that move around, a lot of communities talk with one another. And so, you know, we've been building here for over 20 years, and we believe we have a very positive reputation with the towns that we do business in. We're very proud of our reputation, and we haven't had an opportunity to work with the town of Wenham. I've been at Polty Homes of New England for 20 years now, and, you know, we have not been able to construct a community in Wenham, and we're really looking forward to this opportunity that we have here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Essex, and he can present our proposal. And I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your feedback.
All right, next slide. Thanks, Mark. Thank you to the board, and thank you to everybody that's here in person and remote.
Please do restate your name.
Sorry, thank, yeah, Essex Petrie with Polty Homes of New England. I work with Mark in the Land Planning and Entitlement Group. And before I get into the details of the concept in particular, I just wanted to point out the team of experts that we have partnered with for this project, and that we pulled together to help work through this. Civil Design Group and Matt Leidner, who's joining us here tonight, is our site design and civil engineer. MDM Transportation will be handling our transportation impact analysis. They're based out of Marlborough, Mass. SWCA has done our natural resource evaluation, identification, and analysis. And Weston and Sampson, we brought on for our wastewater and water infrastructure engineering. Next slide. So when we first started talking with the town about the potential for a project, really, the town had just begun on their master planning process. And from what I understand, it's being finalized as we speak. And, but we've been following that process, and all the impressive outreach and public engagement that's been involved as part of that project. And a few things in particular stood out to us as it relates to what we've been looking to do, and, you know, one of them related to this future land use map. That property along Grapevine Road, it was identified as one of the priority locations for balanced conservation and development opportunities. And really, Gordon College generally, and this location specifically, was also identified as a priority location for economic development as part of the master plan outreach process. Additionally, one of the overall key findings from the Community Engagement Summary was the need for a greater diversity of housing types, including mixed use, multifamily, and senior housing. Now, by highlighting these elements, I'm not trying to suggest that we will align perfectly with what the goals that will be stated and have been brought out as part of the master plan, but we really are excited to watch this process take form, and we are very confident that we can partner with the town to achieve some of the goals that have been laid out, at least in the draft statements that have been released that we have seen publicly. Next slide. So I'm sure many of you are familiar with the site location, but just to give a little bit of context, to make sure that everybody knows where we are in town, this is the eastern portion of the town of Wenham. Route 128 is kind of the right side of the map there, with Gordon College just to the left. The parcel that we will be talking about is highlighted in yellow, for those familiar with Grapevine Road in particular. The parcel's kind of behind the woodland parking lot and the Koi Pond area. And really, the area that we will be talking about as far as looking at potential development, the first building is roughly 600 feet off of Grapevine Road, so almost beyond where the parking lot is. And the majority of the development is well over 1,000 feet back into that parcel that you see highlighted in yellow there. Next slide. So this is the current concept. The lot size, as it's shown, is approximately 78 acres. The concept includes seven four-story buildings, and these are all electric buildings, so no fossil fuels on site. Each of the buildings has 50 units, so there'll be a total of 350 units. This is proposed as an age-restricted community. We are also anticipating a 10% affordable, so 35 affordable units included as part of the concept. Each of these buildings also does include a garage under, so that significantly reduces the associated surface parking required or typically provided as part of a building such as this. And each of those garages provides EV charging spaces. In addition, there will also be EV charging stations in the surface lots. One of the things that the garage unders really allows us to do, again, is to minimize that surface parking, and over 50% of the area of this parcel will remain completely undisturbed, with roughly less than, less than roughly 10% becoming impervious to accommodate this number of housing, number of housing units. In addition to the residential buildings, we are proposing some associated amenities to go along with the homes. That would include a clubhouse. So the top of the page, where you can see the rotary, yeah, thank you very much, Margaret, right there, it was where the majority of the amenities would be located. There would be a clubhouse. As part of the clubhouse, there would be a general gathering space, as well as an exercise room, and then a smaller, like, meeting or quiet room. Additionally, there would be an outdoor patio and grilling area. There will also be a pool and accompanying patio with the pool. And then across from that, because you can't get away from pickleball, we will be putting the pickleball courts across from the clubhouse and the pool. We are intending to seek a special permit from the planning board, submitted under the ILOD, Independent Living Overlay District, and we do believe that this project, it fits and complies well with those regs. But that being said, one of the reasons that we are here is, at this point, is to talk openly and identify and consider any other opportunities or suggestions. From a natural resources perspective, clearly, there is, if you're familiar with the site in particular, there are a lot of natural resources. It's a sensitive area. The blue hatched patterns on there represent wetlands. We had started with a GIS-based wetland layer, which we've then gone out with our wetland scientist, SWCA. We also went out with conservation agent, and updated the line work, and really kind of verified, and then made adjustments to the wetland line, which is what you see here. In particular, I will say, just note the northwest corner of the parcel. Initially, when we looked at the GIS wetlands, it didn't identify really any wetlands up there in that area. So getting out there in the site, we were able to identify that there is a significant wetland area in that section. So we adjusted our concept accordingly. There's no map priority or estimated habitats
You don't have to, hon, I just...
On this site. We have every intent to be respectful of these resource areas, and this concept, it really, we have limited to no direct wetland impact. The tightest area is approximately, I would say, 150, 200 feet off of Grapevine Road, adjacent to the woodland parking lot. There's a tight area there where we pass through in between some wetland areas, but otherwise, no direct impacts, based on this concept and what we've identified. From a utilities perspective, we have coordinated and communicated with National Grid. There is three-phase utility or power, which is what we require, because the buildings all do have elevators. They have confirmed and verified that they would be able to provide the necessary power for this project. Sewer would be accommodated via an onsite wastewater treatment facility with associated leaching field. And then water, as I noted earlier, we are partnered with Weston and Sampson. We recognize that water in Wenham, and really, in the region in general, is a very critical resource. And so we're working with Weston and Sampson, with the town of Wenham Water Department, and other water resources in the area to identify multiple different opportunities to bring water to service the site. From a traffic perspective, our partner, MDM Transportation, has done an initial feasibility due diligence assessment. While I know this feels like it's a large number of units, the traffic generated by an age-restricted community of the size is not a significant generator relative to the type of volume and capacity available on Grapevine Road. The data shows that there's not, no concern for the capacity on Grapevine Road or the surrounding intersections to handle the associated traffic. Additionally, from the sightline perspective, our preliminary analysis of sightlines from the general location where we're showing that access shows that we can meet or exceed the required standards for sightlines. Next slide. I'm sure there's a lot of questions related specifically to that, and we'll happy to come back to it. I'll just go through a couple more points, but...
Yeah, I should say, we're going to let you go through your presentation, and then we, I know the board certainly has questions for this.
Absolutely, you know, and, I mean, feel free to, at any point, if you would like to jump in.
We'll let you finish, you know.
All right, this sounds good. Trails, you know, we, we've been doing our homework and our research. We're aware and excited about the considerable trail network. That's, you know, it's a resource. It's an amenity in this area. There's a gorgeous set of trails through this area, and quite frankly, we see that as an opportunity, and really, an amenity for our project and our homeowners. What you can see there in the dashed white line is the existing trail network as mapped, in context with the proposed concept. So ideally, we really do not disturb that existing trail network, but yet enhance and integrate it into our project, and our goal would really be to maintain that access to that trail network, as well as providing it as an amenity for our future homeowners. Next slide. And so as we're going through the details, I just want to take a quick moment to talk about sustainability and green building. You know, over the past 20 years or so, this topic has really grown from buzzwords and fringe markets to really mainstream concepts that drive facets of our, really, of our everyday-to-day life. And Polty does a good job of weaving this mindset into every portion of our project, our commitment to building environmentally sensitive communities. It really starts with our land acquisition our land acquisition process and is evident throughout construction and into operation maintenance. During each phase of our project, we really work to identify and manage risks and opportunities associated with environmentally sensitive development. You know, from site planning, as I said, the inclusion of the underground parking, it really not only reduces the overall footprint of the impervious surface, but it also significantly decreases the amount of stormwater that would need to be managed on site. Building electrification, I mentioned that these will be completely electrified buildings, meaning electric heat pumps, hot water heaters, so no propane, no natural gas, and no fossil fuel dependency or no emissions from the buildings. And as I mentioned, we do provide electric vehicle charging stations at the surface lots and also in the garages. And then from smart appliances to low-E glass windows and advanced insulation techniques, we're really integrating new building products and practices into our material content and construction, really, to not only for the more efficient use of the land, but also to minimize waste associated with that construction of the buildings. And we do install low-flow fixtures in bathrooms and kitchens to ensure water conservation, and we vow strict compliance or exceedance of stormwater management standards using practices such as low-impact development to help us accommodate that stormwater management. Next slide. So this is a rendering of some of the architecture that we've prepared for this project, Wenham Woods. As Mark mentioned, we have a lot of experience in the region. We have had a lot of success with similar-style buildings in the region. They've been very well received by the homeowners, and some of the highlights include, you know, defined front entrance, elevator access to each floor. This, again, is an age-restricted living, so from the garage down below to each of the floors, you have elevator access, which provides single-floor living. We'll have the use of stone and composite accents for a variety of exterior materials. And the recessed balconies and boxbays, it adds some projection and provides shading and some aesthetic value to the facade and the style of the building. You know, for years, we've experienced developing these communities in these regions, and we, you know, continuously survey and have outreach with our homeowners and take feedback from them and update and modernize our architecture based on that type of feedback, as well as coordination and communication with municipalities. Really, these, you know, these are homes and buildings that people are proud to be a part of, and we emphasize that cooperation with municipalities in the expectation that, as Mark said, you know, we build products, and we want to be welcomed back into communities. Next slide. So just to touch upon a few basics as far as kind of wrapping into what we talked about as well as some other elements, some of the project benefits as we see it. You know, it provides a type of housing that really is currently unavailable and lacking in town. And again, as noted in the master plan, something that is mentioned as being desired by the residents. Does help the town grow their AFU, as far as affordable housing units, towards their SHI total with, again, the 10% of affordable units. And, you know, currently, this property doesn't provide any tax revenue to the town, and we estimate that upon build-out, this project would provide an estimated $2 million of net revenue annually to the town. It's private condominium community. It's operated and maintained with minimal services, service costs to the town. Again, those costs that are associated, whether it's police and fire, rescue, were accounted for in that net revenue estimate.
Sorry.
And, you know, again, it's just the, you know, what we saw as some of the, again, the initial draft goals presented in the Wenham master plan, we found that it blended very well with the type of housing that this could provide. And quite frankly, it feels like it's in a part of the community that would be least impactful from a traffic perspective and, you know, from a density perspective as far as the number of units able to be accommodated in this location. And so really, with that, I'll turn it over to the board and open to any questions.
Thanks. I'd like to explore where the water would come from for this development, because I don't believe, and I don't know if there's someone here, I can't see everyone in the room, from the Water Commission who would like to speak to this, but it was my understanding that we just don't have the water to supply this, and you tried Beverly-Salem, and that was not met with approval. So I'm just sort of wondering if you can be a little bit more specific about where the water would come from?
So I don't have a specific answer for you, but you're correct in that we've been talking and through Weston and Sampson and their relationships with members of the Water Commission, as well as others in town, that right now, town of Wenham Water does not have the capacity to serve the project as is. We have not fully explored Beverly water, excuse me, Beverly-Salem water supply. We had, at one point, pursued Beverly from a sewer perspective and looking into the South Essex Sewage District, which that is maybe what you were referring to as far as ran to a bit of a stone wall with that, but we have not fully pursued water from that perspective. But we're just getting started with the investigation on the water front, and we're looking to dive into a couple of different opportunities. And, you know, as we move forward, we'll provide additional information as we get it.
Yep, because obviously, that's...
With no water, no project, absolutely.
Water, no project.
Absolutely.
Is there anyone from the Water Commission either in the room or on the box? Can you, is there anyone, I don't know if we're seeing everyone here, or if there's another sheet of...
No, that's everybody.
Everyone?
Yeah. I don't believe there is anyone here tonight.
Other members of the board have questions?
Chairman?
Yes. Again, Mr. Pasqualelo and then Ms...
Could you put the concept diagram of the seven buildings up?
Yep. Let me just move this out of the way.
Sure.
Did you want this or the map?
No, the, not that, that's the rendering, that one.
That one.
So for your alternative access, right now, you're proposing to go through the parking lot?
Correct.
Do you have any other options for alternative access?
That's the alternative that we have looked at now. We met with, in this room, it was a group of department heads from the town, including public safety, fire, and police. We walked through this proposal loosely, and, you know, we had originally proposed a different location through the parking lot. We adjusted it slightly based on those conversations, recognizing that it's likely we'd still need some additional conversation because the grades in that parking lot are challenging and the turns are tricky. So the alignment, as it's shown right there, likely wouldn't be the final condition, but the location, generally speaking, we think that we could make work.
And approximately how long a distance is it from Grapevine Road to the rotary or the circle?
Sorry, this is Matt Leidner from Civil Design.
I knew we brought you.
Again, please state your name for the...
Good evening, everybody. Matthew Leidner with Civil Design Group out of North Andover, Massachusetts. The distance from Grapevine to the rotary there is approximately 1,200 feet. From where the alternative access that comes through the woodland parking lot meets what's called Street A, that road is about 500 feet from that point to the rotary.
Okay. And last question for Essex.
Essex, yep.
What is the approximate size of the units as far as square footage?
So there is a range in the size, so these are one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, and they range from a little over 1,000 feet to, or 1,000 square feet, excuse me, to about 1,600, maybe, or, yeah, 1,000 to 1,600. Again, varies. There are, within the one-bedroom and two-bedroom, there are different styles within a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom, so there are ranges, but roughly that.
So in terms of marketing, I'm not going to hold you to this, I'm just curious, where would these fall?
So I'm glad you couched it already with that you're not going to hold us to it. You know, that project, obviously, you know, we're years away from putting anything on the market, and it's impossible to tell, but...
I guess if you could, if it were on the market today, where would they be?
So you're not going to love my answer, but it, again, similar to that, within each one-bedroom and two-bedroom, there are ranges in sizes. There are ranges in amenities that within each of those. So a real rough number, and again, it's going to change whether you're on the first floor with a view, or if you're on the fourth floor with a view. So there's just a number of different factors that go in, but roughly between 400 to 600,000 would be a range.
If I could just expand on that one.
Please.
I think one of the benefits of this...
Come to the microphone. Excuse me, could you come to the microphone, please?
Because we're on TV.
I just want to expand on that a little. So that's, that was perfect, but one of the benefits of a community like this and housing like this, and that it's different than what you have, and we think it provides a different type of housing than what's in town. And the reason these communities have been successful is that it provides a wide range of prices. So from the affordable homes that are in the 200,000s to the one-bedrooms that could be in the high 300,000s, 400,000s, to the two-bedrooms that could be, you know, 500,000s, 600,000s, it's, the beauty is, it's the range of the prices which offers a wide selection of homes to a wide range of buyers that might not necessarily be able to afford anything in other parts of town or in this area, frankly. So, you know, that's something that really works well for these types of communities.
Yeah, and I promise, I'm not holding you to the, I just wanted to get a ballpark. I had no idea where to go.
What's the interest rate?
Well, you guys clearly have evaluated the tax benefit to the town, so I'm sure that's based on some...
Yeah, absolutely. That's, yeah, coming from today. So Dan, real quick, just one more thing I wanted to add to your question about the access, because you'll note that moving north of where the driveway D accesses the rotary, it's a kind of a boulevard with two separated sides, separated by a median, intentionally based on, again, the conversations with fire and police, so that in the event that, you know, there is an issue on one side, it doesn't, you know, it provides a wider berth for passing through.
Yeah, I mean, the concern with that, with the longer access road, is if, you know, if something happens, you can't get back there, is there some other way to get in there? And I'm looking, I mean, we're way too early in this process, but that just, that was something that I had a question about. I didn't know if you were able to possibly put alternative access, this might go outside your lot line, but on the northern, is that the north, not the northwestern corner, but sort of the edge of that light green? No, other way, right there. I don't know if you're able to come out around that way to Grape, if there's some alternative access to Grapevine, I was just curious.
Yeah, that is outside of the property boundaries. Yeah, but thank you.
Mr. Woodland?
I have two questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
Thank you. I have two questions. One centered around the topology of the land and how you're going to deal with the hills and valleys that are there. And that related question, is this going to sink into the woods or rise above the trees?
No, that's a great point, because if you're familiar with the site, it is no secret that there is a pretty significant climb, and the design of the site plan is, if we had the topography on here, you would see that the lowest building, if you will, the first building, if you're coming up, is kind of situated before there's the steep climb, and then those other six buildings and the amenities would be kind of up on, kind of climbing up that, that, there is a significant change in topography there. So the goal is to build these buildings into that hillside, recognizing that once you get up there, it is a plateau, so we would not be sinking them too much. It would, you know, we would be lowering a portion of it to get the roadway up there, and then from there, getting from the roadway to the garage unders, there would be some lowering associated just for access, but the, you know, keeping earthwork to a minimal while also kind of building the buildings into the existing grade would be the goal.
Thank you. My hope would be, if we're going forward with this, that we see some renderings from the street at Grapevine Road, looking across and up to see what they're going to look like. If you have an example, you could look at the Manchester development happening off 128. That's going to kind of shine a beacon around that neighborhood and...
What was the development? I'm sorry.
It's Manchester on Route 128. They're building a big wall, rode up, and it's going to be sticking out like a beautiful beacon in an otherwise treeed neighborhood.
And it's certainly something that we can start to provide as we move along, whether it's a rendering. We can also go out and just perform simple balloon tests, just so that we can, you know, get an actual sense from the roadway. But, and again, there is significant buffer, you know, from a wooded perspective, and it is a significant distance off of Grapevine that, you know, that cul-de-sac, it's like, you know, Matt said, it's, you know, that area is 1,200 feet off of Grapevine Road, so there is a good distance.
And my next question is surrounding commercial space on the property to try to keep residents on space as opposed to running out for bread and milk or, you know, errands for a quick dinner. Are there any ideas of making this a full community where you also have commercial locations to...
It is not something that we have as part of this concept. It doesn't currently comply with the zone as it stands today. Certainly, having amenities on-site is, could be an attractive opportunity for our homeowners, as well as the town in general, recognizing that the location, it's removed from, you know, this side of town, so that having something in that area could be beneficial for all. It has come up in conversations we've had with the planning department and others in town and with Gordon College, and it is definitely something that we would entertain in those conversations with Gordon and with the town.
I'm just being practical, because, you know, traffic studies and all that kind of stuff doesn't get into the head of people, and I could see them turning right to Grapevine, left on Larch Road to head down to South Hamilton to be doing their shopping, which are windy roads at best, and to try to keep people kind of in that development to help them, you know, ease of acquiring stuff would be helpful.
Yep, no, thank you.
And I just want to confirm my, cite my concerns about water, right? Water here is getting scarcer and scarcer. the Ritz-Mitchell River is considered one of the most endangered river water supplies in the country, and conservation isn't enough, so we just need to be careful about this.
Yep, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Matt Woodland.
I think Gordon College gets all their water from the Beverly-Salem water supply.
They do. Yeah, that's right. And, yeah, and we've, we have, you know, in the process, we've talked to them about that, we've talked to Beverly-Salem, and, you know, we are continuing those conversations, Then they actually have mains right up to the woodland parking lot area.
Do other board members have questions? Mr. Anderson?
So what about trash?
So there are trash and recycling facilities as part of each of these buildings. Each of the, so it's hard to tell in this site plan, and again, this is a very conceptual level, but, you know, we have more defined and developed communities that are built very similar to this. There would be an area typically close to the garage entrance outside of it for a dumpster. Each of the floors would have a trash chute, dumps down into the garage, and then that gets wheeled out and the trash comes and picks it up. That's part of the condo association fees from a trash pickup. And additionally, again, we haven't refined this concept yet, but we would be providing recycling facilities as well for an area like this, likely there would be at least two, potentially three locations for recycling for the homeowners.
And these would be public roads?
No, the expectation is that the roads would stay private.
If I involved in the association, trees...
And would it be...
Yeah.
We remind people...
I'm just going to my computer. This is about...
Mute everybody, Margaret.
Yeah, could you do that, Margaret, please? That would be lovely.
Thanks. So I just want to clarify that. So Street A off of Grapevine Road to the rotary, we're proposing that to be a public right-of-way, so that you can see the yellow line there, you can't really see it on this, but the yellow line there is right-of-way, so that would be...
So, that would be a public subdivision roadway. And then, and then all of the condominium buildings and the rest of the area would be part of the privately-owned and maintained condominium.
And would it be restricted access?
I'm sorry?
Would it be restricted access? I mean, obviously, the public wouldn't have a right to ingress, but would there be some type of private security or something to enforce access?
Yeah, we're not intending to have a gated access. It would be a private community, but we typically don't provide any kind of private gate or anything like that.
So, I saw the number of 2 million net revenue. So, my math was 500, 350 units, 500,000, 1,550, for rough numbers, per thousand assessed, is about 2.7 million. So, is the estimate that the services draw on the community would be about $700,000?
As a rough number.
Very, very close.
Yeah.
My question.
And what is that 700 comprised of?
A lot of that is police and fire and calls, and there are, you know, national equations that are typical for communities age-restricted in particular, based on locations, you know, suburb, rural, that kind of breakdown. And so, it's based on that number.
So, for the 350 units, how many residents would you expect?
It's just a guess, but maybe 1.5 residents per unit, so maybe 500 residents.
So, just to follow up on Dave's question, when you're calculating the net revenue, are you using, is it roughly a 25% ratio that you're using for expenses? Town expenses?
If I may.
Yeah.
So, you know, we did, and we can provide this to the board after the meeting. We did a simple financial impact analysis based on other more formal ones, more formal ones that we've done at other similar types of communities. We use Mark Fugé, who does our formal impact studies, and we'd be happy to provide that during the process. But basically, the revenue is property taxes. And based on the projections of the sales prices, we had $2.5 million in total taxes, so you were right on. Again, you know, whether it goes up, you know, or down, it's still a lot, is what I like to offer. Because these are all projections, so there's no right answer. But, you know, is it positive or is it negative? And it's really positive. And then there's also motor vehicle excise taxes. So, you know, on this exercise, I assumed 1.25 vehicles per unit. At $25, approximate average value of the vehicle is $15,000. Again, standard values used in recent typical professional impact studies.
So, I'm just, so does it work out to, it's something like 20% to 25% of the revenue is what you expect for services?
No, no, we actually, we had a small, small cost for education in there. Very small. I mean, this is an age-restricted community. We do not foresee any kids at all, but somebody can certainly argue, oh, you're going to get one or two, and it's possible. So, there's a small cost of education in here. There's $1,000 per residential unit for police and fire. That's what Mark Fugé has used in recent studies, which is actually pretty conservative, we believe. There's, we have $25,000 in here annually to the Council on Aging. And then there's a $50,000 annual O&amp;M for the, for the public street A for maintenance of that street. So, that, again, came out to about $625,000 in costs annually. And you back that out of the revenue, and we were just over $2 million annually net positive to the town. Whether that's 1.8 or 2.5, I'm not sure what the real number will be and what the number will be two years, five years, 10 years from now, but I can guarantee you that it will be significantly positive.
I have a couple, I have a question back on the parking situation. Your rendering shows quite a lot of on-the-site, on-the-street, parking lot-type parking, but you were describing underground garages. There's a lot of ledge and rock on that. Are you really going to be able to do underground garages there? And if so, do you need the additional parking in front? It's not beautiful.
The parking that we're showing here is fairly, is typical of these types of communities that we found, a roughly 1.8 space ratio is kind of the happy medium we found with our homeowners. And that's what this is demonstrating, is that 1.8 space per unit.
So, how many, how many spaces under the buildings then?
There's 50 in each.
And you still need the full parking lot scenario?
It would be a lot more if we didn't have those, but those, the amount that we're showing is what is necessary to hit that 1.8 number.
May I?
Mr. Woodland?
There are 50 units per building, so you're allowing one covered space per unit, essentially, about.
If you want to...
So, if you have more than one car per family, you'll need the outside space as well?
That's right.
Additionally, too, for visitors to age-restricted, if you've got family members visiting and whatnot, we want to make sure that it accommodates that. You know, parking, it's an interesting balance, especially for suburban communities. You know, a lot of the trend has been for reduction per unit in more urban areas. And then you run into situations where you don't have the parking to accommodate guests, visitors, and whatnot. It tends to, now you're dealing with an overflow parking type of situation. It's a balance. Again, this is a ratio that we found that has worked in very similar communities that we've, that we've found to be successful.
And you don't think you're going to have any problem with underground garage in this location?
Our expectation is no, but we have not gone up and done borings or, you know, that sort of testing yet. But we recognize that there is definitely ledge in the, in the site.
Thank you.
Last roadway question for you. I know there's been some concerns from the fire department about access around the perimeter of the buildings. So, have you, have you considered having sort of a roadway behind those three buildings, sort of off the main drive here, so you have more circulation?
So, and we have had this exact conversation with the fire department, and it's typical for all of our communities. So, again, this concept plan doesn't show it. So, what we would do in this situation, there wouldn't be a full access roadway behind it, but there would be, there would be fire access that would essentially come off of where you would tee into the garage under. It would continue straight and then go around. And the code is that it has to be within 250 feet. And so, that would, obviously, we would put together something and confirm it and work with the fire department. But that, the goal is to hit that code as far as being within the 250 feet.
And would that connect back to the main drive here? Or are you just talking about just behind the buildings?
It would be just behind, just like halfway behind the building. Again, it's something that we would certainly work through the design with the fire department to make sure that they were comfortable with, but that is something that we have found that achieves compliance with that code.
Is that the last question from the board for the time being?
I have a question, and if you don't know, Margaret, that's okay. We'll just say we don't know and consider later. If we increased our stock, housing stock as a town, by what, 25%? Would that affect us in terms of the MBTA numbers, or is that just fixed in stone at this point?
I don't think it would affect our numbers, no.
It was just at one point?
We'll have our MBTA zoning in place long before this is built.
So, MBTA is not going to be a rolling situation?
It's not going to be what?
Rolling.
No.
Because this is long term.
No.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if you've, if anyone's done the math, but obviously, our affordable numbers are actually better than 10%, which is good. So, if these were 10%, it would drag down our numbers. Do we know how much that would, what our net percentage would be if this were 10% of 35 or 350?
I have not done the math. Currently, we're at 12.8%, but I haven't done the math. If we add 350 units, these would essentially negative out, because you have to be at 10%. So, I think our numbers would stay the same, would stay at 12%.
Well, it would bring it down.
It would bring it down.
Yeah.
It would still be over 10%, but it would be less than 12%.
Yeah, we can do the math. If the board has finished for the time being, I know there's a couple people in the audience who represent town, other town committees, and I'd like to ask them to speak first, if they have something to say. And then, anyone who wants to get up and give their statement. Mr. Colaruso? Again, please, your name and who you're here for, in addition to yourself.
Phil Colaruso, Chair of the Conservation Commission. So, I don't know if you're the right people to ask these questions to, and I'm sure we'll have our day in front, you guys in front of us. But, could you, talked about the wetland delineation being originally GPS. I'm assuming that was the state data. And then, you went out in the field. When, I know we did a field walk with you guys, and there was a question of when, wetlands defined as Wenham Wetlands under our bylaws versus state wetlands. So, is that what you were talking about when you said northwest corner?
Yeah, share the mic, sorry.
So, in particular, that northwest corner was an area that was not depicted as part of the GIS wetland. Not necessarily a distinction between state versus local. It was more of an area that was not picked up on the GIS wetland. But when we went out there, it was clearly identified as a wetland area, and so we added it to this. Yeah.
So, this delineation doesn't necessarily represent Wenham Wetlands?
It, there, it's, we have, sorry. The boundary does represent, the boundary does represent both. There are some pockets where we do have defined differences. We have a graphic that shows that level of detail. And certainly, as we go through the process, we'll walk through that with you.
So, just to clarify...
Please use the microphone.
The reason for that is that we have... Just to clarify, so, we use the GIS, and then we did have a walk with it, well, then we did have a wetland scientist do the, flag the wetlands or verify the wetlands on the ground, and we did have an informal walk with members of the commission. But they're not officially verified, so I don't want to give the wrong impression. So, we have not gone through the official Anrad, ORAD process with your commission. I hope, you know, so we would still need to do that. The commission has not approved the wetlands that we're showing. We just feel comfortable with the wetlands that we have, because we had a wetland scientist help us, you know, use them for planning purposes.
And can I just ask a question following up on that? Is every surface on the plan, as you've shown it, sufficiently far away from the wetlands to meet the ordinances? And there was, I think it's 100 feet?
Well, it depends on the type of wetland, which is my next question.
Well, exactly, right, right. I wonder if you've done that thinking?
We are confident that the development that we're proposing will comply with the local and the state regulations. And we look forward to working with the Conservation Commission through their process the same way we would work through the planning board with your process. So, we will have, you know, our day and lots of days together.
I have to ask one more question, and that is concerning the water. I mean, if you tried to get water from a well, say, or a well field on this site, what would that do to the, all the water bodies and wetland areas around the site? Would it have an impact? Oh, I'm sorry, I'll let you go then.
No, go ahead.
So, that is a possibility. We have not got there yet. But I would, I would just say that we're at a high level here. We don't have Weston and Sampson with us, and I'd really like Weston and Sampson to get those questions and for Weston and Sampson to be able to answer those questions. I don't think I'm qualified to be able to answer those questions in a proper manner.
It just seems logically like it would have an impact.
But we would certainly have to, we would have to have all of those questions answered during the process.
So, this is more of a statement than a question. When we were doing the sidewalk, there were questions about the presence of potential vernal pools on the site, which has a different setback requirement than isolated wetlands. And so, I don't know if your consultant has done that level of analysis yet. But it is getting to be that time of year when it is the appropriate time to identify those resources. And so, if they haven't done it, you may want to get them out in the field in March to do that.
No, thank you. And that was actually another one of the adjustments we made in the field, was there was, again, through the GIS resources, there was a potential vernal pool identified at the north, kind of where the words Hamilton and Wenham, but on the Hamilton side. And then, when we went out there, the blob, if you will, of blue hatched area beneath the Wenham text is actually that, where that vernal pool is. So, you know, we have started to address some of those differences in the field, but we have not done the official vernal pool certification process yet. But certainly, that's, would be a step, for sure.
Okay. And could I ask, do you have an estimate of, in the light green hat area, so basically, the footprint of this development, how many trees you'll be removing in that process?
I don't.
Okay.
No, I don't have that estimate for you at the moment.
Might I suggest that we have a tree policy in town where we ask homeowners, when they're removing trees of certain diameter, to consider replacing them elsewhere. And so, might you consider some type of mitigation for that activity?
It's certainly something that we will be happy to discuss with you as we go through the process.
Is there anyone else from a board or committee that would like to speak?
Hi, Ted Bachelor, Iron Rail. My one question is the leaching field. If I remember, I haven't been out there for a while, but that was pretty rocky and ledgy. And so, I'm wondering if a leaching field will work there, and is it going to leach into Koi Pond?
Great question. I don't have the answer, but I think developers...
Well, Margaret, if you go back to the, go back to the previous slide, please. Yeah, so, we don't have a field location determined in particular, but the reason that it is over in that location, and to be clear, that yellow line that's shown on the adjacent is kind of a fictitious property line in discussion with Gordon College and us. But that is actually an amazing pocket of sand and gravel soil in that area. So, this is an area, if you're familiar with this section of the woods back there, Gordon College's ropes course is a little bit further east from here. And we have actually gone out there and done a decent number of soil tests in this location to do exactly that, to confirm what we found by, from the NRCS soil maps. And we did confirm that it is a great, grand, excuse me, gravel and sand deposit in that area. So, but obviously, anything that we would propose or plan in that area would be, requires significant DEP review and reassurance as far as the leaching into Koi Pond.
Right, how deep the sand is before ledge.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And I can assure you, I was out there during the testing, and it was significant.
Okay. My second question is on the affordable housing. Is that still age-restricted?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a follow-up on the leaching field. Presumably, tree cover would be removed there, if that was in fact your leaching field.
Correct.
Where do the trails go relevant to that? Because my recollection is that there's trails all around in that area.
There are, so, there you go. So, there is a trail through that area, and, you know, it would be taken into account when we look at the location of that field area. And we've gone out there, as I mentioned, and done a significant amount of testing, and we have a good understanding of, you know, the size that would be needed, and... and we have a good understanding of, you know, the size that would be needed, and, you know, balancing, again, Gordon's Ropes Course, and they have a facility out there, so balancing the two would be important in the location.
Do you have a topography overlay for this map?
I, I don't.
I mean, is that, I don't think of that area as flat. I've done a lot of hiking and running back there and.
It is, this, actually, it is pretty, we do have the topography there, I don't have it with us tonight, but it's certainly something that we can share with you and walk through with you.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if your leaching field is on a hill, or if it's.
No, no, it is actually, it's a surprising, again, we identified it using NRCS soil maps, you know, just on a desktop, and went out there in person and verified it, and then went out and did further testing with a machine, and further verified the types of soils as well. So it is a relatively flat area out there in this section.
Thank you.
Could I ask one more question on leaching?
Yeah.
One concern I have too is putting that many homes on a leaching field as the, these forever chemicals that are coming up PFAS mitigation, is there anything you can do to, in your leaching process, to stop that from hitting the groundwater? Because it, it's either, it gets into the aquifer, now we're faced with a townwide problem of cleaning that up, so.
Yeah, and that would be part of the DEP analysis and whatnot that we'd be going through.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to anyone who'd like to speak, oh, Jim? Could you please come up and use the microphone because we're on TV, and I'm sure everybody at home would like to hear you.
Jim Purdy, Larch Row. If this project goes through, I have two questions. The amount of construction traffic, trailers and so on, would you be working with the police department to assure that hopefully most of it comes off of 128, and it's going to impact Gordon College, I think, more as opposed to large trucks coming through from 1A or, or coming through Dodges Row on, in Beverly? That's the first question. And the second question is, excuse me, if this project does go through, what's your experience from the first dig in the ground to completion?
In other words, timeframe?
Timeline, yeah.
Yeah.
So to answer the first question, we certainly would be working with town and police department in particular on both a traffic management plan generally, but also a temporary construction traffic management plan as well. So that specific topic, we would walk through in painful detail with our traffic consultant, MDM, as well as the police department and DPW and others within the town. So it's certainly something that there would be ample opportunity to comment on the specifics of from a temporary construction traffic perspective.
Can I ask you to say something more forceful than that? Like you would commit to trying to assure that large construction trucks won't go through downtown Wenham?
I certainly can't stand up here and say today that I would commit to any of that, but I, what I will commit to is that when we get to the point where we're having that conversation, we will be happy to understand what diversion routes would make, would make sense, and talk through those different options. I absolutely will commit to having those conversations when we have the data and the detail to be able to understand what those, you know, traffic patterns would mean.
And then I think there was a second.
The second question was related to the timeline from construction. Typically, we see for each of these buildings, and they would be built sequentially, it's a roughly nine-month build process for each of those buildings. And so we're looking at seven of those, so you're looking at probably a six-year construction period or so.
I see. Did you, do you have a follow-up? And then this gentleman needs to speak. Yeah, if you could come up and use, unfortunately, we have to ask you to use the mic because we're on TV and they can't hear you otherwise.
So the town, so from start to finish, six years. So you complete a building, the tax revenue from that would be generated once that building is occupied, is that the way that would work? So we would see an incremental increase in taxes over a six-year period. It's not like we're going to get $2 million net year one.
Correct, and absolutely. And so that, that number that was referenced was at full build.
At full build, okay, thank you.
Now. Thank you for your patience, by the way, all of you, really.
Good evening. Mike Novak, Conservation Commission member. Can we go back to the previous slide? I didn't catch this in your initial presentation, but I just saw you pointed out the leaching field. There's a, quite a large wetland in between your developed area and the wet, and the leaching field proposed. Curiosity strikes me as how we're going to get from A to B.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely something that we have not determined exactly, but it is certainly something that we will have to investigate and provide significant detail on when we identify that, that route.
So as a follow-up, if, if that area or the route doesn't work out, do you have enough area? There must be some preliminary sizing in terms of how big of a system you're going to need roughly. Do you have enough area in your previously determined developed area to accommodate?
As far as accommodating a leaching field in the area where the buildings are developed?
Correct.
The, the soils in that area are not as amenable to that, where that location that we've identified for that leaching field is ideal for that purpose. So right now, that is, we are investigating the ability to get to that area.
Okay, one more if I may.
Please.
We talked about a 1,200-foot roadway from Grapevine to the, to the circle, and of course, there's a lot of other surface parking, it's been brought up before. Snow removal, not only snow removal, the areas, but also treated snow. We have pretty much surrounding resource areas around the entire property, so more of a statement than a question, but there's, we're really going to need a solid plan on that. And do you have enough area for snow storage if we get a winter unlike the past couple that we've had?
Ever again.
So for the, the first part of the question, we will certainly work with the town to identify whatever treatment program the town typically uses for their roadways, and from a snow storage perspective, that is a typical design component and element that we build into the site planning of the, in the location of the buildings.
All right. And I guess, sorry, one more statement. The construction traffic, you know, I heard that this will be a special permit, so the idea of the, the board kind of dictating how the construction traffic works is certainly something that could be on the table, is that correct?
We can condition a special permit, yes.
Thank you.
Other people in the audience? Yes, please, come on up.
Hi, Dave Molitano, Wenham resident. Some questions from my own education and just in general. So does the planning board approve this? Is it a done deal, or does it still have to go through? Okay.
We don't even have an application yet.
I just drew assumptions.
Do you want me to tell you what the process is?
No, I'm good with that. Oh, yes, actually Catherine does, so, yep.
Yeah, yeah. So the process is, and we can't speak for the developer on this, but at some point, if they decide to go forward with this project, and I would presume they would have to have their water and sewer ducts in a row before they would want to come for a permit, because otherwise we will probably say, come back when you have water and sewer, because you can't get a permit without it. They would come in with a full set of plans that would show precise renderings and all the engineering drawings and the topography and everything they would need in order to satisfy the overlay district that they're coming in under, which is independent living overlay district. Our zoning bylaws are, on the town website, you can look at them and see what the requirements are. At that point, we would, if their, once their plans are completed enough to go to a public hearing, we would open a public hearing and take public comment. The board will evaluate the plans in detail, I promise you, and have our own comment on it. We will hear from all of the town committees and boards that have some footprint or some hands-on this, the Conservation Commission, the police, the fire department, whoever has hands on this will, will give us our views, and then we will deliberate and make a decision.
So it stays with the, the planning board?
I think you.
It does. Do you want to?
You just forgot one point.
Oh, you go ahead.
What they're, they would file an application for the special permit, that's what starts this whole process.
Yeah, they would have to, that's what I meant by.
So there's no, there's no zoning committee looking at this, it's all within?
That's us.
Your group. No, I, I'm sorry, any other zoning bylaws or any other?
These are the zoning bylaws.
Okay, okay.
And that's what they would come in under. There's a special overlay district for, it's called independent living overlay.
Oh, thank you for your work and your, your presentation too. I could tell a lot went through it. So as I'm understanding, the gentleman's about the, the height and the house on the hill, because it is rather hilly, so if I'm, if I'm understanding, the garages are below ground, then there's four stories on top of that?
Correct.
Okay, so that would make them bigger, it's just a, or a question, would make them bigger than the, than the dorms that are currently at Gordon College now, right? Because they're only two or three stories.
I don't want to, I believe they're three-story, but I don't, I don't.
Okay. Yeah, they're three? Okay, so they're a story higher, okay. The second one is age restricted. So what age is that, 50, 55?
55 plus.
Does that mean children or no children?
There's, there's no specific restriction on children.
Okay.
But again, as mentioned in the presentation, we've built a number of these age restricted, and while we can't say zero with confidence that there would be zero children in it, we typically find very few, and as part of the fiscal impact analysis that we've done and that we will provide as part of the application, what would go in that would be demonstrating those examples as far as we have seven or eight communities where we will have the data that goes along with it as far as how many schoolchildren are associated with a similar development.
So we need to decide, because every year, right, there's a three-year rolling average of student enrollment in Hamilton and Wenham, so we would need to decide how many additional students are coming, then offset, and how much our cost is going to go up every year. Is that correct?
That, that would be accounted for in that fiscal impact study.
Every year, though, we would be adding more children?
It would, well, the, the, it would be, it would be factored out as far as, as the bill, as the development gets built out, how the, the different schools and different age groups would be impacted by potential new students.
Okay. So if I'm looking at 350 units, 1.25 kids per unit, I mean, what number do you use? I know you have parking space numbers, I'm just trying to.
So we've referenced a couple of different things, to be clear, relative to occupancy and parking spaces. So Mark had mentioned 1.5, that was a, a number of occupants per unit, and we referenced 1.8, which is a rough number of parking spaces per unit. Again, our expectation for this would be very low as far as number of schoolkids, where we certainly wouldn't say zero, because there, there may be instances where there is that situation, but the fiscal impact analysis will provide data and analysis that shows it'll be a very low number, but it will factor it out for a number that makes sense.
Okay. So I was just.
And again, just to, these are one and two-bedroom units too, so the expectation for a lot of kids, and it's a 55-plus, is, is low.
I hate, I am a little close to that with children, so I'm just, I'm just aware, so, and then, not that there's anything wrong with that, right? So, again, thank you for your work, but just so, and then from a population standpoint, you're looking roughly 475 additional members of our community, give or take, is that?
That, that's a fair number, yeah.
All right, so, thank you for the time answering my questions.
Can I go back?
I'm sorry, Mr. Woodland?
I have a question on your estimated price, because that's a very attractive price. That's the market, if you want to know about it, that seniors need to leave their big house to free up the big house for the family and stay in their community. When you came up with that number, is that your best case or worst case? Because now we're talking about complex sewer systems, potential other kinds of setbacks. So when you figured out your approximate number that you gave us, I have this funny feeling that as we put more and more, once you explore more fully our zoning codes and explore more fully the topology of the land, will the prices keep going up, other than inflation?
No, no, and, and I can assure you that we have been doing our due diligence. We have first met with Margaret and other members of the town probably a year and a half ago, and since then, we've been doing a lot of due diligence on our end for that exact reason, to understand exactly what it would, what we would have to undertake for this development, and that would take into, that does take into account the associated infrastructure that we've talked about here tonight.
It would be a sad situation if after two years, you build the first building, it's up there, and the units are starting at $800,000, and, you know.
I, I understand the concept, but again, you know, the, the demographic that you mentioned when you started, that's exactly what we envisioned for this project as well, and, you know, it's, you know, that those prices are going to be, you know, we, we can't outprice ourselves either. So we, as part of our due diligence, we want to make sure that we can do this project and accommodate the, the demographic that we are, you know, trying to hit.
My follow-up question is, on your, the project that you just did in North Reading or in Andover, do you have sale prices that you could share on those units, so that we'll know? You say they're comparable, they're comparable towns, you brought them up for us as comparable.
Those are great questions. So we've built these mid-rise buildings in many different communities in, we'll say, the last 10 years. So communities like Westwood, communities like Andover, communities like Sudbury, Woburn, North Reading, Grafton, Westboro, probably missing a few. And so we have, we have comps, we have comps of the, of the, of the prices in this area, and we also have comps in prices of what we've sold these units for in other communities in Eastern Mass.
Can you share some of that with us tonight?
And it's, I can't share it with you tonight, but I can tell you it's not $800,000.
Okay.
So I can't, I can't tell you what the market will be three, four, five years from now, six, seven, well, if it's two, three years before we even start, right? So you're, you're talking, but right, right now, the numbers that we're using, we feel are reasonable and, and really reasonable estimates of what, you know, this type of product at this location can achieve.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question, just because I just have been sitting here looking at the overlay district? The overlay district actually allows 20% of the occupied units to be occupied by somebody who isn't 55 and over. Did you calculate that? Was that part of your calculation in figuring out the school numbers?
And is that an occupied or is that a, a primary owner?
No, that, it's occupied.
So the, the 55-plus is one, the primary owner or owner has to be qualified for that 55-plus. That's a, a typically a.
No, no, I'm reading in my ordinance. My ordinance says at least 80% of the occupied units shall be occupied by at least one person who is age 55 or older, but that assumes 20% may not be 55 or older.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to take a stab at that.
I just wonder what number, when you were putting the numbers together, did you take that into account? On the school numbers?
Can I answer that? So.
Please.
That language actually mirrors exactly the HOPA Act, the Federal Act.
Correct.
Housing for Older Persons Act. And the Housing for, Housing for Older Persons Act is the only federal law which allows discrimination in housing, which allows you to have these age-restricted type of developments. And that 80, so that 80% is the HOPA Act, but we have no intentions of, of doing 80%. You know, our, our age-restricted communities, our, our senior housing communities requires one occupant in every household to be age 55 or older. What the 80% does, it allows an emergency condition where there's, there's an emergency or there's an event, and that household becomes non-compliant, and then you, and then you have like a two-year window to, to correct that and, and, and become back in compliance. But as a condition of the special permit, I will tell you that we would be okay with one occupant in every household being age 55 years or older, and we have no interest in, in the 80%. And the homeowners that move into this community, they love senior housing. And the homeowners that move into this community, they love senior housing and being with people of like age and like mindset. And they don't want children or younger folks in, in those types of communities. So that would actually be a problem for our types of communities. I hope that answered your question.
You had a question here?
Yeah, yep.
Sarah Prescott. I appreciate the traffic question. I live on Hull Street. We're right near Gordon College. We go past the college every day. Came here tonight. The students are very young. It's amazing. Nobody's been hit already. 300 units right down the street is a lot of traffic for this area. And as, having lived here 30 years now, raised kids, this town, what makes this town so lovely is the wide diversity of people and the open space. And, well, it would be great that the trucks didn't come through town. They're going to be going right down Hull Street, Grapevine Road. That leads to road conditions, truck drivers. Personally, I don't see a lot of police presence down on our, our end of town enough as it is. So it's a real concern for something so large to be going in to this lovely section. And I appreciate all the work that the town does to give us an opportunity to speak and to be heard and the thought that you put into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak? Please.
Ted Bachelor, 50 Grapevine. My first impression, when I looked at the architectural vision, looked kind of like some of the things going up next to the Northeast Expressway going into the north, Mr. River Bridge. Will you offer like different architectural concepts? Like something that might be more becoming for our town?
That is a hard question for two people to answer here tonight, because architectural differences can vary. But we certainly, from a facade and, and building material, as far as stone and, and other types for the facade is certainly something that we can discuss. Again, architectural preferences are kind of, you know, individual. So it's hard to, to say specifically what it would be that would, you would be referring to, to adjust it to.
Just something more in nature, more in, with the, you know, the looks of our town. As opposed to like a flat roof and, you know, something that looks more urban.
So it's certainly something that we will walk through in more detail. As far as the, the flat roof element of it, I will just say that, really, that is a design element brought on through the, the all-electric building. That, the flat roof is what allows us to accommodate the mechanical equipment for that, for, to make it an all-electric building. So it's a balance there between some style and, you know, reducing the reliance on fossil fuels.
Yeah, but you could build into a pitched roof, like certain flat spots to take care of utilities.
There are certainly different treatments that we can look at as far as, you know, the parapet style and whatnot to, to make adjustments to.
Yeah, no, I'm just looking, you know, you know, being able to see, you know, two or three or four different alternatives instead of just one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that there are folks on the Zoom also who have questions. Is there anyone else in the room? Before we go to the Zoom, call folk. Yes, please.
Again, Mike Novak. Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify the question you were asking about that piece of the regulation you read with the 80%.
Yeah.
Could you read that again?
Sure. It says, age restriction. The ILF shall be subject to an age restriction as follows. 80% of the occupied units shall be occupied by at least one person who is age 55 or older, provided that in the event of the death of the qualified occupant of a unit or involuntary transfer, a one-year exemption, da-da-da-da-da. But the point is simply that it's an 80% figure, and it is from the, the federal law.
So just for clarification, this is, I know we're very early in everything, so asterix, everything I'm saying with that. Does that mean 20% of the units do not have to be 55-plus?
That's what it says here.
So in theory, just as a, the 2 million number is nice, but the 2 million number sounded like there wasn't a big chunk taken account for school, school age. And as we all know, school, our school budget is a very big piece of what we do here. So if 20% of these units could potentially give us children into the, the school system, and that's not accounted for in the fees, in the financial statement, I just.
Well, that's why I was asking about how the school-aged children number was accounted for. Because of course, even if every unit were occupied by one person 55 or older, you could still imagine a grandchild living there.
Absolutely. And that's what I, my, I was just trying to clarify your question versus the answer. I, I got lost. I wasn't sure where, where we landed.
I didn't feel that the answer was really an answer. It was, it was more a statement of intention not to use these terms.
Fine. All right. So I'll, I'll leave that to you guys to, to nail down later. I just wanted to clarify that in my own, in my own mind.
Totally appreciate the follow-up.
Can I chime in on that? Sorry.
Mr. Pascarella.
So the, the language in the overlay district is take from the ordinance, which is a minimum requirement.
Right.
What, what I heard from the presenters was their intention is that 100% of the units are going to be 55-plus.
I heard that as well. Okay. But I just, I guess the last piece of that is, and I know you'll figure this all out, but how is that enforced?
Well, that would be part of.
That can be rhetorical. We don't have to.
That would be part of the permit application process.
So that's, that's the kind of, I felt like the missing bridge of where we were in that, in that little piece. Yeah, thank you.
Margaret, we have people on Zoom who have questions. Can you open that? I can't see that, just for, just so people know. I, I don't know who has their hand raised and who doesn't. So Tom Starr. Can you tell the order?
Yes, I have some questions in the chat also. I want to read.
Questions in the chat?
Yeah.
Okay. Should we go to people with their hands up and then questions in the chat? Is that how we should handle this? All right. I, I see Amy and Tom Starr both have hands up. I wonder if you would like to decide among you who's going first.
I'll go first. So this is Amy Starr. I live at 41 Pleasant Street. And I wanted to thank you all for opening this up to the community and doing the presentation and getting our feedback. It's really great. I just wanted to say, somebody alluded to the numbers, and I, I just wanted to point it out that, you know, we have, according to the government, to the Massachusetts State Government, we have just a little over 1,300 housing units right now in Wenham. And so this is going to be a stunning increase in housing units. It's going to fundamentally change our time. I'm just going to make some observations. They're not really questions. So, I mean, it's going to change kind of the voting blocks, the demographics. It's going to be different. We're going to have proportionally way fewer families with younger kids. So it's just something to think about. And that's something that in the bigger communities where these developments happen, like Andover and North Reading, they're not going to have that same impact. You know, we're an eight-square-foot mile historic town with a relatively tiny population. And this is going to be a very big impact on us. Secondly, I want to observe that the trails there are completely a treasure. I would encourage you all to go there. Our Girl Scout troops hike there. With the pond going around, it's, it connects back to Chewbacca. It is a treasure. It is pristine. It's gorgeous. If you imagine this map we're all looking at without this housing project there, you can see just how beautiful it is. It's isolated. It's amazing. That, you know, just putting this housing development in the middle of it is going to, I mean, let's be honest, destroy the trails. It's not going to be, you know, it, we're going to be able to see the housing from all of the trails. And the, the portion of the Chewbacca Lake treasure that is Wenham's is, is going to be sacrificed. So it's something to think about. And third is the water. We're talking about Salem's Water and Beverly's Water, like it is, like outside water. That's Wenham Lake. The well there is our groundwater. This is all our water. This is Wenham's water. So no matter where it comes from, we, we don't have a separation there. And if there aren't going to be sewers, and if we're going to have that much waste going into this waterway with this kind of wetlands, which, I mean, the wetlands with, with climate change are only going to become more pervasive, not less, you know, this is all our water. And so that's, that's my observation.
Thank you. Tom Starr?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to speak. Can you close your, your mic? Sorry. Okay.
I think you might want to mute if you're not speaking, please, online.
You have to mute and shut it off.
Tom? I want the meeting.
Okay, sorry. All right, well.
Sorry.
Sorry about that technical issue. So, yeah, I mean, I'm just struck by the massive density of this truly urban development, you know? I mean, four-story apartment blocks in a small area. It seems completely out of character, as Ted Bachelor was saying, you know? So I was wondering if the developers, you know, gave any thought to, you know, just where they're, you're building this, you know, as opposed to just doing the pulty, you know, typical kind of pulty development that works maybe in other places, and, you know, and citing it here, as opposed to, you know, perhaps being a little more sensitive to the landscape? So I don't know if you want to respond, or should I just go on?
I would ask the developer.
I'm not sure. I understand the exact question.
I think the concern is the density. It's like more than four units an acre and.
We, we felt that the, the density and in the location in this section of town specifically was, was a good, in this location. And, you know, this is what, it fits underneath the zoning. And, and we found that it, it was a good spot within the community to accommodate this level of housing for the town.
Can you elaborate?
I guess I'm not sure exactly what specifically you're looking for.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it just doesn't, you know, this development, we don't have any apartment buildings in the town.
Well, so these, these are, these are not, these are condos and.
That's a form of ownership. That's not a, a building.
We, we actually do have some apartment buildings in town, but putting that aside, I think the question is why this specific area for this density?
And again, from the perspective of the town in general, we felt that this location was good as far as the access to 128, the, the buffering of the property that would be accommodating the, the building specifically is set well back off of the roadway. So, you know, as far as a location and abutting neighbors, there are very few. And so we felt that this location in particular was a good opportunity to address some of the items and goals that have come up in that master planning process as far as addressing specific housing types and needs that are currently not available in Wenham.
Right. But I mean, did you consider, you know, fewer units or fewer buildings or less height? Or, you know, I think it is set back, but I think that because it's up on a hill and four-story construction, it's probably going to be visible from quite some distance.
I absolutely agree that there will be view, view lines of, of these buildings from locations, you know, along Grapevine or at the college.
Okay. I think, I think that, unless you have, do you have another question, Tom?
Well, I was concerned about the negative impact that, you know, 10% affordable would have on our affordable percentage right now. So, you know, would you consider, you know, a higher percentage than, than the minimum of affordable units?
If that's a question to me, it's, it's, it's a conversation that, you know, during, once, you know, the permit is submitted, the application is submitted, that if the, the board would like to have that conversation with us and bring that up as a potential element of the special permit, we'd be happy to have that discussion.
I would just note that our, our senior housing overlay has a 15% requirement. And I also, you described the application you are thinking of submitting as coming in under the independent living overlay district. And I wonder if you wanted to talk about the reasoning there for choosing the independent living overlay district rather than the senior housing overlay district?
We felt that the independent living overlay district fit pretty well with the, the concept that we are proposing to submit under.
Is that because it's fewer affordable units, or is there some other reason or that you can expound on?
It certainly wasn't a choice specific to the fewer affordable units. I honestly, I don't recall the specific reasoning behind the, the choice that we made between those two. I know that we did look at both of those. But I don't recall specifically the reason that we chose the independent living, or that we're considering the independent living overlay district, right? We haven't actually submitted a permit application yet. So, but, you know, based on our initial discussion, that's what we were considering.
So I would just note that the senior overlay district also has a local preference component to it, which is, I would offer an attractive feature for the town.
Particularly given your statements about the master plan. Because I do think that that is the element that people are concerned about most.
Certainly. No, that makes sense.
So, so I just have one other thing, and, you know, I hope you won't think that this is mean-spirited or not. But, you know, I did check customer satisfaction on pulty homes of New England. And the Better Business Bureau cites customer reviews with a very, very low satisfactory score. It says, you know, score of satisfaction, basically one out of five. And I don't know if you want to address why that might be, or, you know, any comment you can make on that?
So I, I'd like to answer that. So I'm actually not aware of the score that you're referring to. But I'd be happy to look into that score and, and provide more context at a later date. But I can tell you that we have thousands of existing homeowners who complete surveys for us routinely. They complete surveys for us when they move in. They complete surveys for us one month after they move in. They complete surveys for us one year after they move in, three years after they move in. And we take those surveys very seriously. It's a huge focus of our company as well as many companies. I'm sure we all get many surveys from every company we do business with today. But we take customer service very seriously. We have an entire staff dedicated to customer service for each of our projects. So if there's some negative comments on, online, I don't, I don't doubt that. But we have thousands and thousands of homeowners. And, you know, if there's a few handful of people that, you know, are online publicly, you know, we, I, you know, I don't know what to say about that.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's why I was looking specifically at the Better Business Bureau, because I felt that was, you know, pretty legitimate.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll look at that rating. That, that doesn't, that doesn't sound right to me. So I'm sure there's an explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else online who has a question or wants to make a statement? And again, this is just the beginning of a process, and it actually hasn't even begun yet because we don't have an application yet. So we're really, really happy that people are here and are expressing their views. It will help a lot, because this is a transformative kind of thing we're talking about. That point that Percy made on the Zoom about the percentage of additional housing units is well taken. So.
Yeah, and I have a few chat questions.
You have chat questions. We're going to do chat questioning.
Can I just make one statement before we move on? Would that be okay?
If you use the microphone.
Yeah. I just wanted to make one statement before we move on, because I know, I know this is a lot of units. I know this is a lot of units for Wenham. And, and Esic described. And Essek described very eloquently why we think this location is appropriate for the project that we're proposing. But it's changed and it's different and we understand, we understand that. We know it's different than what's there today. It's today, it's pristine, beautiful, undisturbed woods. And there is a beautiful, pristine trail network that goes around the area. And the, I just want to, you know, I just want to mention that the owner, the landowner, has made a decision that he would like to sell the property and capitalize it and to have it developed. And, you know, we think that our proposal, we're really excited that our proposal meets a lot of the needs and the desires of the town based on the master plan. As opposed to if it's not us and if it's not this type of multifamily housing, it could be something else. It could be a single-family development full of, you know, large, single-family homes on large lots, just like everywhere else in town. And so the woods are not going to remain or may not. There is a development to be had there and we really are excited about our proposal. And we look forward to working with the town through all these, you know, these concerns and these comments that we've received tonight and will continue to receive. But I try to just ask to not compare the development to nothing. Please try to compare the development versus a different type of development that's allowed thereby right. So I hope that helps. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, so this isn't necessarily in response to that, but I think it's adjacent to that. As somebody who's worked on the Master Planning Advisory Committee for some time and now we sit at the precipice of a master plan. In my mind, every application that comes before, certainly this board, but any committee in this town should be evaluated in part through the master plan. The master plan has been an immense process with significant public input to deliver a guiding vision for this town going forward. And if you haven't read it, read it because it is what this town is going to be. It's the charge for this town, for all of the boards and committees, the residents, everyone who comes before the boards, the developers and whatnot. Now, there are five core themes in there. This project touches upon one of them or maybe two of them. But I don't think you can, I don't know that, I've heard enough tonight to know that it's completely been, that this project has been designed reflecting the five core themes of the master plan. One of the core themes is about sustainability and preserving natural resources. And yes, there is one that talks about Wenham for all ages, but that includes things like intergenerational interactions. I don't know that this features much interactions. This is a major development exponentially larger than anything this town has ever known that kind of sits onto its own. And there's no adjacent access or resources for seniors to the community or for intergenerational activities. That's just but one example. I think I would encourage anybody, whether it's Pulte or any other developer that comes to us, whether it's a 350-unit development or splitting a lot into two parcels, how does this fit within the master plan? Because for four years I sat on this board, we didn't have a master plan. But now we actually are almost, we have one and it says quite clearly where this town is trying to go. I know I'm getting a little long-winded, but I'll offer one more thing. In the master plan, I'm glad you put up the land map, there's a lot of thought that went into that, including identifying strategic parcels where you can have mixed conservation and development opportunities. We don't have a lot in this town. This is a major play, not just on a major parcel, but for this entire town. There is limits to what this town can do. We are 55% wetlands. There's only so much traffic a community can have. There's only so much water a town can have. There's only so much electricity. This is a major play. Yes, it is high-density housing, but it is not a mixed-use development. And it's certainly not a commercial development. It's a high-density development. That just needs to be considered more fully. But we as a town and really the residents need to consider, is this how we want to allocate the percentage of resources that this town can accommodate with this much more traffic, this much more water, this much more electricity? We cannot any longer evaluate a single development in a vacuum. It has to consider, if we did this, what happens to the balance of the Gordon property? How does that change the options for development for the rest of that parcel, which is a strategic development as well? Is a Leahy Medical Office building going to go in there? That makes sense, but what about other options? What kinds of things could go in there? So I just think there's a lot more that I would encourage everyone in this town, as you look at this, to think about, how does this fit within the master plan? If you haven't yet participated in that process, it's not too late. There's a draft online. Read some comment, read it, provide some comments, participate because we're near the end but not at the end. So dive in. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also just like to say that it isn't as simple as, well, it could be that instead of this. There's a lot that has to go into us evaluating adding 350 units of housing to the community of this size. And I know you appreciate that. Chat?
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Will you read them into the, so we can all hear them?
Yes. Yep. I can actually put them up on the screen for...
I don't know if people on TV can see that. Can they?
No. Yeah, I think they can. The people online can. So Agnes, Agnes' iPhone has asked if we can provide contact to the presenters, provide the presenters' contact. I said I could put that online if that's okay?
That's fine. Yeah, you can use my contact. Margaret, you have my contact, so.
Michelle Bailey asks, would the Board of Health or Concom have a part in the approval? And I did respond to that by saying that they would definitely be part of it. Board of Health would be part of the Septic approval, but if it is over a certain size, DEP would oversee the design. But our Board of Health...
DEP is a state office, just so people know.
Department of Environment.
And I just also want to reiterate on that, sorry, Margaret, real quick. And I also to kind of address what Ms. Prescott had mentioned earlier in that, again, this is really early on in the process and there will be numerous, many, many other opportunities to interact, to talk, to ask questions, to pick at this and to look at this and, you know, investigate further. So in no way, shape or form is what we're presenting tonight, you know, an endgame in this. This is just the very beginning. There will be significant other opportunities to ask detailed questions about every element of this.
Next question is, I can't read it.
Yep. Next question is about age restrictions. What remedies does the town have if the community is not in compliance with those restrictions?
I don't know the answer to that. I would think that would be a question for town council.
Yeah, I believe the zoning enforcement officer would be involved if it was a violation of their special permit.
That sounds right.
And Al de Groot asks, says, senior and affordable housing in the isolation of this property does not make sense from a practical sense for access to town services, commuter rail, library, groceries, library, et cetera. This, along with the risk of damage to the tobacco watershed area, are of grave concern for future water needs.
That's more a statement than a question.
Mm-hmm. And that was it.
Is there, are there other chat messages?
Nope. That's all I've gotten. And no one else has their hand up that I can see right now.
Is there anyone else who has a question or wants to make a statement who's here? And I appreciate everyone's patience as we go through this process. If not, we will say thank you for your willingness to come in and be open to hearing what people have to say even before you have submitted an application. Oftentimes, we don't get that from the development community, so we do appreciate that.
And thank you and we appreciate the opportunity. You know, this, the interaction with town members has already informed the design and will continue to. And that's the goal of having this and these discussions beforehand. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, once again, it's nine o'clock and we have the MBTA Communities Conference.
Let's not do it.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Dan is here.
We have a crowded room.
We need to do it.
Do it.
Do it. So the conversation, just so if people are in the room and want to remain in the room, has to do with a zoning overlay district that we are required by law to put in place. It's called, it's under the MBTA Communities Act and it requires, how shall I characterize it? High-density housing within a half a mile radius of MBTA commuter rail stations. There's a complicated formula by which you have to figure out how many of those new units need to be or can be, must be right near the station and how many can be scattered around in the rest of the town. And we have been considering alternatives for how to do this zoning overlay zone. And so...
Let me try to summarize the minimums.
I'm gonna turn it over to the...
Okay, bear with me because this is from memory, but the minimum requirement for Wenham, we have approximately 1,400 housing units. We have to provide by right multifamily zoning for 360 units. 25% of those have to be within a half mile of the train station. So that's approximately 75 more, give or take. We have to zone a total of, I think it's 24 and change acres in the town. 25% of that has to be within a half mile of the train station, which is again...
About 4.8 acres.
So not all of the zoning has to be within the half-mile radius of the train station. We can put the minimums within, the minimums have to be there, but across the town, we have to have the totals that I just mentioned. So we have developed scenarios with the help of a consultant, outside consultant, that would comply with what the state regulations are. We have, I think, four different scenarios that we've considered.
Yeah, we have four that you're considering.
One is, there's a housing authority site, which is, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I'm going to say that's about 24 acres or so.
I'm sorry, I wasn't expecting you to do this tonight.
That's okay. Well, it's, didn't we put that on the agenda?
It's on the agenda.
There is approximately 31 acres of Boulder Lane that we've looked at, which we had a previous feasibility study that said the highest and best use of that would be multifamily housing, I think.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. There is a parcel about approximately six acres that we've called the Larch and Walnut parcel, I think, that is located sort of behind...
Do you want me to find the...
If you can.
You can.
I can.
Which is behind the, where CVS is located. There are two lots there that we've looked at. And one of the requirements is apparently we can't split lots, so we can't take half a lot here and half a lot there. So, and I think the other is just a combination of those different parcels, whether we wanted to do, say, the Larch Walnut with the housing authority site, the housing authority site alone, the Larch Walnut with the Boulder site. So one of the keys is we need to have a certain amount of area within the half-mile radius. So we've had a public forum, I think it was in November, we had pretty good turnout.
And it can't be age-restricted.
It can't be age-restricted.
Cannot be age-restricted, however, we can require, is it 10% or 15% minimum affordable housing?
10%.
10%.
MBTA will allow us.
MBTA, so there will be an affordable housing requirement. Thank you for the age-restricted, so.
It can be multi-use.
Multi, yeah, it could be.
Multi, multi...
Multi-use.
Yeah.
Mixed use, mixed use. Thank you.
Commercial, office and residential.
Okay, so...
Retail.
Retail, well, commercial.
So this is a continuing process. This, we need to, I think the consensus here is we are going to comply with the state mandate because there was some question early in this process whether it was worth it complying or not.
We've discovered it is.
Yes, but we haven't really had, we haven't had a discussion about that. We haven't had a discussion about the two different, or the four different areas. Thank you, Margaret.
Awesome. And you'll notice that half the radius, of course, is in Hamilton, so they are having
the same dialogue as we are at this time.
Okay, let me go to the...
Let's go to the scenarios.
Can you please go to the mic? Sorry.
And just identify yourself.
My name is Laurie Reynolds. Only been in the town seven years and I call it my hallmark town. That's, we all joke about it. That's why we moved out here. We came from Wakefield. I grew up in the city and love living out here. Love the screen. The neighbors just moved in. They came from Cambridge, just where I did, and they love living out here. You know, full of that hallmark feel. And I'm not against progress at all, but I think three, like everybody's saying, 350, that's a big number. Like if they came in, probably maybe 150 and...
So you're back on the previous...
Yeah, that too. Like two things, that. I think if they adjusted their numbers a little bit, it would be a little bit more easy to swallow than, because I live down, right by Gordon College. I am a stone's throw from Gordon's College. We get our water from Beverly because we're right near the farms. So, and I will tell you, they're having their own issues with their water too there. It's horrible. So that's probably why they're telling them, no. That being said, I do think we need more in the town to relieve the tax situation everybody's also complaining about. What that is, is, and I'm all for senior housing. I think the seniors have paid their dues and they should be able to stay living here affordably and sell, like you said, sell their houses and welcome the families in. So I think no one's against the change. I just think that that was a big number to put out there for Pulte. Because if you look at the other communities, that would have been the thirteenth largest community. I mean, they went into Conked with only 84 units. That's a small town like this town. I mean, Andover's a bigger town, you know, so they need to compare it a little bit better to something of our size.
I totally appreciate your comment. I think we have to, though, if you have something to say about MBTA at this point, please feel free.
Yeah, no, the MBTA, I think we need that too, but...
Yeah. Well, this is an attempt to put, I mean, I think that the purpose of the act was to try to put, you know, to cluster multifamily housing near train stations where folks, to make it a little bit more...
Feasible.
Feasible, right.
All right, so Margaret has found the slide with the, the purple area on the bottom right is Boulder Lane.
Which is out by 128. That white thing is 128.
And it's multiple parcels. The total, I think, is approximately 31 acres. The green on the map is the housing authority property right now, which is... 26 acres. The blue is 100 Larch and the, what color is that?
Zero Walnut.
That's it.
Orange? The orange is zero walnut. Together, those are 6.3 acres combined. So we, as a board, haven't had a discussion about which, which direction we think we should go. And by that, I mean, do we want to pick a site? Do we want to concentrate all of the units within the half-mile radius of the train station? Do we want to spread them out? How do we want to do that if we want to do that? So I think that that's a conversation we should at least begin.
Yeah.
And I don't know how you want to do this, if you want to go down the line, if you want to ask people's preferences, if you want...
Well, I think we could start by saying, do we think it should be concentrated in the area of the train station? So we can go down the line and do people have, are people willing and ready to express their views on that tonight? Mr. Woodland?
I think we should split it as much as possible so we don't create a density issue in one area. Remember, this is only, we have to get the zoning on the books. So don't panic as you're listening to this. It then has to be out there. Some developer has to say, I can make that work. They have to get all the water. to get all the water, sewer, electrical, all that other stuff to work.
Just like you just heard, right?
Just like you just heard. So, this is just, we're just creating the district, and my thing, my thought would be to split it fairly between those two parcels, between, well, the three or four parcels, the downtown section, which could be nice housing for those who want a village experience and want the train, and then the Boulder Lane for people who are more car-centric and want to get in and out of Wenham quickly.
Can I just say?
Mr. Clay.
I agree.
Use your, use your microphone, please.
There you go.
I agree, I agree with Rick.
Okay, that's two. Mr. Anderson.
Just one question about MBTA regulations, they mandate a density, what can we do on top of that in terms of how much we dictate what the design...
So, the density is, the minimum is 15 units per acre, right? Which has to be, which has to be an average across the whole project, it doesn't have to be in one.
But can we add things on top, like...
Yes.
Mixed use?
Yes.
Yeah, design?
There's nothing that would prohibit that in this, in the statute.
As long as there's the density is met.
As long as you hit the minimum requirement.
We can require site plan approval. These, they're by right, the multifamily by right with certain density, then we can require site plan approval for design, parking.
And we can allow, we can also allow commercial slash office slash...
We can allow mixed use.
Mixed use if we want to.
We can do that now, yeah.
Yeah. What's your view?
Are we just talking about these two districts? Are we talking about more?
This was scenario three, this is what I think Rick was mentioning. This is the zero Larch Lane and the other small lot. It does not include Enon Village area, and, but it does include Boulder Lane.
And I apologize, I was absent for a meeting, so what's the story from Enon Village? What's their perspective on this?
We haven't met with them yet.
We haven't had any...
We're meeting next week.
We need to have the meeting.
So, we're not gonna hold you?
This isn't dispositive.
This is the beginning of our discussion.
This is the beginning of a conversation, it's not dispositive.
Where we are. I mean, I don't know how you develop Boulder Lane. I don't, I don't know, I've never, I understand the feasibility is high density, or density housing, though I, I've always seen maps that appeared to show that it was, would struggle to be developed. I understand this is just for the purposes of creating an overlay district. To me, what we're basically talking about as a town is housing in the center of town, and that's where this is going. If, I think that affordable housing site makes, or Enon Village makes the most sense, because it potentially has two access, two points of access, one on Larch and one on Main, I guess, or maybe on Walnut?
Yeah, it, you would, the only other access to that property is through the Crosby's Plaza, where the train station is, and they would have to gain that access through that property there, someone would to develop it that way.
Or off Larch.
But they don't, there's no access onto Main Street, you have to cross the railroad tracks.
Because it's behind that truck.
And go through this property here, because this is Enon, let me see if I can...
But the overlay district...
This is Enon Village. Here's the tracks, and here's Main Street.
So, if we're creating an overlay, this is a stupid question, and I should have asked it years ago, if we're creating an overlay district, we don't have to identify the properties it's gonna go on, do we?
They, they do, they call it an overlay, but yeah, they do want you to show you where, they're calling it an overlay, because the underlying zoning still is in effect.
Because we have a property that's zoned commercial within that half mile radius, right?
We have, a portion of this lot right here is zoned for business.
Yeah.
About half of that is zoned for business, but you could still, you could make that still, the, this overlay, and, but that business, a lot, a use would still be allowed.
Right.
Yeah. This is just saying it's by right.
But we haven't considered that. We haven't considered that lot.
That was not one of our scenarios, because it is the only business district we have in town.
But if we were doing it mixed use?
Mm-hmm, that's a consideration.
That's a thought.
So, one of the issues to keep in mind is the lot splitting. So, if you designate one of these lots, you are designating the entirety of the lot, which means all of it would be subject to by right multifamily zoning.
Right, 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 right.
So, if you use the housing authority lot, for example, and I should qualify this by saying, we are going to have a meeting with the housing authority, some of us are gonna have a meeting with the housing authority, I think, next week?
Yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday, to explore this further, but that is something to consider. So, if you designate all 26 acres, you could very well end up with by right 360 or more units. I haven't done with the math, what's...
But, but how do we do it without District Two?
What's District Two?
The housing authority.
So, I will, I'll jump in and tell you what my preference is on this.
Yes.
And remember, this is a zoning exercise, this isn't a development exercise, we're not saying this is gonna be built, or this is gonna be easier to build, or we should build this, but if you're doing this zoning, I would go with the Walnut Larch parcel, which is 6.3 acres within the half mile radius, which would allow for the development of up to 70, we could say 73 or 75 units, to satisfy our minimum. And then, I would zone the remainder of it on the Boulder Lane site, which would provide for the remaining potential for up to the 360, so...
So, that's what Rick and I agreed to.
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's what my preference would be.
We're not overloading the downtown district with housing.
Right, I mean, you're still putting 75 units.
It's okay, but not 300.
And, and I, I would agree with that, and I would, I would say that in both cases, we should be writing this as a mixed use, with a mixed use option. So, in other words, you can, in addition to, because, otherwise you'd, yes.
I think that's consistent with where the master plan is going.
Exactly.
As well, because if you put, let's say you put 75 units down there, they're apartments or whatever, you'd probably want to have first floor...
Commercial space.
Restaurants, shops.
Yes, it would be a tremendous asset.
For the Gordon College or whatever comes next.
So, that's...
Microphone, sorry about that.
I'm sorry. I may be repeating what you already know, but I was on the housing authority when that was developed in '76 and '77, and you're aware of the buildings.
Yes.
From the buildings down to the houses for the disabilities, developmentally delayed folks, that's all leaching field.
Hmm.
So, that is probably three acres at least, because we had a whole, a lot of problems with the leaching field back then, it had to be done over and over, and then you got the houses for the developmentally disabled, so, and back, I don't think you have, what did you say, you had 26 acres?
Yeah, it's not really, is what you're saying.
So, just FYI.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I think, I think the consensus is to stay off that property, from what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
Yeah. If you're gonna, if you're gonna bear with us until 9:30 at night, you get to speak.
Mike Novak, just speaking as a resident.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Couple things that I heard, that I just want to clear up inconsistency-wise, maybe, and maybe I just misheard you. The previous one, just the Gordon College property that we were just talking about, I heard, I heard comments about, it's isolated, there's no connectivity, there's no intergenerational, I think was the word, and then I just heard, well, we don't want 350 units in downtown. But isn't that what you just said? We said, we don't, we want connectivity, but we don't want it downtown, isn't that where that would go? Now, I'm not saying 350 is the right number, but I'm hearing a lot of trying to limit it, and I, I think that's counterintuitive to what I was hearing, some of the comments that were going towards the Pulte gentleman, in a way. Now, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just, I'm hearing a little bit of a mixed message.
So, from a master plan perspective?
Yeah, can I just...
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm trying to pick at, is...
Go ahead.
So, the...
Mr. Anderson.
Let me just point out one difference between this. So, this is an exercise that we are mandated to go through by the state, that we have to, we have to create zoning districts.
Can I, can I just, I'm pretty familiar with it, so just fire away, and I'll stop you if I don't...
So, what, what I'm trying to say here is, once we create these districts, once we create this zoning, it's by right.
Understood.
Which means we lose control as a board, so the difference with...
Don't necessarily agree with that, but go ahead.
Well, if somebody comes in and they're able, once we create the by right multifamily zoning, right, somebody comes in with a project and it's by right, then it's by right. If they don't need any...
You can subject it to site plan review, you can, you can create your own triggers.
Okay, but, but site plan review doesn't mean we can deny the project.
Understood.
That's the difference with a special permit.
Well, the density is also gonna be, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
I'm just saying, the difference is, when, when somebody's seeking a special permit, we can deny a special permit if we don't think that...
Sure.
We want to grant it for valid reasons, right? By right is a different animal, so that's, I just want to make that point.
No, I completely...
Anderson.
Yeah, I appreciate that point, I, I understand, yeah.
I guess my concern is, and I still can't, so I understand this is a zoning exercise, but it's tough not to look at these numbers and consider what if, right, they were actually developed. I, I can't even fathom what our town in Hamilton would look like if by right these developments occurred, at the numbers, if we had that many units on our side, and that many units relatively on the Hamilton side, in the half mile circle, on 1A, on 1A and Walnut, and I, I just can't even fathom what that would, how we would survive that. I just don't...
It wouldn't maintain the character of the community.
Sure, no, no, no. Well, I know, I think you have to be stronger than that, I don't know how 1A could tolerate that level of traffic, I don't know how Larch or Walnut or any of these things could tolerate it.
But you have to, you, I understand your point, but I think you need to look at it from a different lens. The point of the MBTA overlay is to encourage public transportation, you're not adding that much traffic.
Hey, I'm the guy who says that the bus shouldn't stop at the Stop and Shop, it should run to Newbury Park, right?
I agree 100%.
But there's a reason why it doesn't go up 1A, and I'm the guy that rides that train, and there's one between 7:00 PM and 9:30, and we're building a thousand, zoning for a thousand residents on a train that runs every two and a half hours? This is not a well-conceived outlaw.
Yeah, Hamilton's numbers are over 700.
But we're trying to...
Hold on, hold on.
The other piece of this that you guys didn't hear is that there's an exception in here, in the statute, for small communities or something like that, and we are under it, we are over it by like a thousand people, right? If we had...
Eleven acres.
Or 11 acres, or whatever it is, we are, we are just beyond being able to take advantage of that exception.
I understand.
Even though we are a tiny town.
And it's, and also the car of the horse, right? The MBTA, MBTA communities, as David was saying, is once every two hours, and it's not that reliable, and no one's using it now, so the MBTA also has to step up their volume as this process goes forward, and improve their perspective.
That's kind of the point, I think, though.
I think, I think, I would say that the, the purpose of the law is to encourage development near the stations, economic development and housing development, really, I mean, although that's not a part of the statute, in order to support the T.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, to put people, that's always been my...
Two other real quick points, just, when you, I know density's a concern, I understand that. We do have some built-in, the things that keep density down, obviously water supply and the ability, leach field was just brought up, so that's, there's already some checks in there, too. And the other thing is, density becomes an issue when you overlay one contiguous parcel of a major size. Your overlay just has to be a contiguous area that allows that unit density, it doesn't have to be one lot. So, if you overlay a bunch of small lots, you, in a sense, control the density in a way, but you still meet the overall. And I look at that as the idea of doing that, which would allow that small commercial piece to maybe be developed with units above, on the smaller lots, where you're talking minimal 3, 4, but the overall contiguous meets the 15 per acre. I get it, you, you overlay 26 acres, you, and, do the math, I forget what you said.
Yeah, 300 odd.
Right, but if you overlay a contiguous, a contiguous overlay that has 15 different parcels in it, no bigger than X, well then, your density is almost controlled by, because your, your setbacks are still in place, you don't change any of that, so your building area is still regulated, in a sense.
But I don't know if that's true. I mean, if you have a one, one acre lot, they could still put 15 units on it, and I don't know...
It's, it's allowed, but, but you're gonna have setback restrictions, you're gonna have septic restrictions, like, we have built-in restrictions, so I don't think you'd ever get to it.
We're hiding the zoning, so...
High restrictions, that's what I mean, yeah, that's exactly what I'm talking about. So, I'm just trying to offer a different way of looking at it.
Right.
In some of the stuff that I've seen.
Looking at it a different way, what's your end? What's the, what's the goal in your mind?
Smaller...
Where do you, where would you put it?
Downtown, and I would want to stretch the...
Can I add one thing that we didn't mention?
Yeah, please.
So, the 4.8 acres within the...
The half mile, yeah.
It has to be contiguous.
Right, but it doesn't have to be one contiguous lot.
No, it, no, this is...
The overlay does.
No, you're right, this is two lots, that we're looking at right here.
But you could overlay 10 lots and still get the same thing, is that correct?
But we don't.
Not, in a vacuum, in a vacuum.
Yeah, yeah, sure, in theory, if we had six one acre lots next to each other, we could do that.
But we don't.
But we don't.
Yeah, I haven't studied it, I'm just hearing and reacting.
I know, and I, I understand, we've been...
I know, you've probably kicked this around.
We've been digging through this for over a year.
We've had a consultant involved with us as well, trying to look at it a different way.
Yeah, and I missed the first one, I would have, I would have attended, but...
So, we could do that in theory.
Yeah.
But in reality, our choices are limited.
So, we've had a conversation where I think one, two, three, four of us agree on the same idea, is that right?
I think that an attractive, well thought-through, mixed-use development in the downtown area would be great, I think, providing that all, I started out, I came into this process thinking all of it needs to go downtown, because that was the intention, but then the more I think about it, and the more I think about what that does to downtown and traffic and everything else, I think putting some on Boulder and some on the smaller parcels down...
So, Dan wanted to have a discussion.
Just to start it.
To start it.
So, I think we've had it.
And I think we've done it.
Right. So, you're, you're calling the question here, and it's...
Yeah, can I, can I just...
For somebody who just sat through a three-hour select board meeting two days ago...
Let me just add one thing to your, to your, to your question, just, just to add one thing.
Don't start, I mean...
We are required to come up with something in order to meet compliance.
Understood.
It doesn't mean that in the future, we can't zone other parcels or, or come up...
Oh, yeah, sure, it's always still on the table.
It also doesn't mean any of it will actually get built, unfortunately.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, your, your timing, you have, we have till the end of the year?
We do.
We do, but we, this needs to go through town meeting.
Town meeting, yes.
Which is why we've been talking about it a long time.
About a fall town meeting, sure, that makes sense.
All right, are we done?
Okay, I think we're gonna call the question, Mr. Clay is getting antsy.
All right, that's...
Will.
Ian?
Call the question, it's 9:30, and we have minutes...
Could I just ask, do you want to schedule another meeting specifically for MBTA, or Could I just ask, do you want to schedule another meeting specifically for MBTA, or do you want to have it on the March meeting?
We will not have time on the 29th, is that your assessment?
I don't believe you will, no.
So, why don't we put it on for March?
Okay.
What's our March date?
What does March look like otherwise? Is it, is it otherwise empty, or is it?
No, I'm not sure yet what's coming up in time.
Look, while Margaret's looking, Mr. Novak, I liked what just happened, there hasn't been a lot of people that have come into our meetings, or at least the ones I've attended, and said like, hey, you could look at this a different way, we've had paid consultants on grants, we've had meetings, like, that was awesome, okay? But, but, if you can show the math on a different way to draw a district-
Bring it to us.
-that makes more sense to you, like, please, like, because, yeah, because I don't think, I've never felt like we've, like, fully run it to ground, we've relied on, like, the consultant and kind of what we've all thought about, but that doesn't mean we don't-
And Dan has spent a ton of time on, and we've had a public meeting.
That's the most feedback we've had, outside of the forum that we had at Bukeur, that, that is seriously the most public engagement we've had on this topic, and we've been begging for people to participate.
That was the most technical comment, too.
So kudos to you.
It doesn't have to be the end of your participation, I hope it wouldn't, if you can, if you've got more, bring it.
There will be a public hearing.
I was waiting for the date.
We don't have, well, that won't be, the next date won't be the public hearing, but-
Yeah, you're not ready to propose the zoning yet.
No, no, not at all.
No, we have, we still have to-
You've got to pick an option first.
We've got to pick an option, and then we have to-
I think we have a general consensus on an option, unless we get some magic bullet that we haven't seen yet.
We did.
The 14th?
Well, I'm wondering if, I, I don't know what else is going to be on the 14th, but if we could dedicate the meeting to MBTA, that would be helpful, so that you have the time that you need, so you're not here 12:00.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, so if we can say the 14th, if, if anything, if anything comes in, I'll let you know, but I don't have anything on the agenda yet for that, I don't have any projects, so, yeah, okay, so, March 14th?
Do we want to do minutes tonight, or can we table the minutes till the 29th?
I just saw one, the word value was spelled wrong, was it like missing?
There's a couple of misspellings I found, can we, can we table them till the 29th, please, as you point out, we've been here for almost three hours.
Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn until February 29th.
Just wanted to say to table the minutes, then, table both sets, okay?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Yep.
Yep.
At what, 7:00 PM?
And luckily, we only have a February 29th meeting once every four years, so.
Yeah.
Is it March 14th?
Oh, that's right.
March 14th is our next regular meeting, but we have a meeting on February 29th.
Okay, sorry.
What's going on at that meeting?
I'm going to give you this right now, we got a request to-
The amendment.
-hold a hearing for an amendment to the zoning bylaw to get on this.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the trash yards or something, junk yards?
Agenda.
Is this the only thing that's on?
But, isn't, when is this board going to, I thought that this board was going to see, I mean, that impact meeting's on the 29th?
You know what, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure, that's the only date you can have this meeting.
Can you second it?
I second the motion.
What's the motion?
We're still, we're still taking matters not-
It was a motion to adjourn until February 29th.
So this is, this is the subject matter for the 29th?
Yes.
And we are or are not going to have the inclusionary zoning thing come back to us then?